We'll go on to number nine, adoption of the city of Uba City's fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets and fiscal year 2021 appropriations limit.
So, good evening again, Spencer Morrison, Finance Director. Tonight I am presenting you with a review of the fiscal year 2021 operating budget for the general fund with changes approved at the June 9th meeting, a special council meeting. I will be asking for council approval to adopt the enterprise operating budgets and the capital improvement budget, along with some other considerations we did not discuss last week. Please help me also recognize Lynn Hale, Accounting Manager, who I refer to as the architect and reference librarian of this budget document. With all of the revenue uncertainties, staff presented a $3.5 million deficit general fund operating budget to the council on May 26th, then expenditure reduction scenarios of 2.5% and 5% for the public safety departments, 2.5%, 5% and 7.5% scenarios for the remainder. On June 9th, that was on June 2nd, on June 9th, council directed staff to, across the board, 2.5% cuts, with some exceptions I will cover in a few slides, such as the Community Services Department who offered 5%. So this slide graphically shows the changes in total general fund revenues over time. There are 10 years of actual historical results, the fiscal year 20 projected and fiscal year 21 proposed budgets. You can see the proposed budget revenues for fiscal year 21 are expected to decrease from the highest level ever in fiscal year 1819. Actual revenues are proposed at 43.2 million, including anticipated transfers in. The proposed 2021 revenue increased from 42.7 million, you recall from the workshop on the 26th, due to the accounting for the $500,000 drawdown of pension stabilization trust funds into the general fund to reimburse pension costs in the fiscal year, and that was a direction staff received last week at the special meeting. So keeping with the theme of monitoring and reevaluating the city's revenue stream quarterly, along with balancing the too much too soon and too little too late ideas, council found consensus with an across-the-board general fund reduction of 2.5%, but did make exceptions totaling $293,000. Please note that the positions in the reduction scenarios are frozen for an amount of time to capture savings and not eliminated altogether. The budget document will continue to show full-time equivalents for these positions in the budget summary section, however, department budgets have been reduced for the period of time specified. And again, I just want to acknowledge the Community Services Department did put forward 5% reduction scenarios, which council did accept. The projected deficit before the 2.5% reduction scenario was 3.5 million. The exceptions to the 2.5% reductions totaled 293,000, as I mentioned before. They include to not cut from the development services budget valued at 64,000, to remove cuts to funded vehicles in the vehicle replacement plan from the department reduction scenarios, which has a value of 172,000, and to remove the new officer recruit position from the police reduction scenario, which is valued at $57,250 over the next, over a six-month period. The proposed draw from the pension trust of 500,000 further reduces the deficit to about 1.8 million, so from 3.5 down to 1.8. This is a familiar slide for the general fund expenditures, including actual results for 10 years, along with the fiscal year 20 projected and the fiscal year 21 proposed amounts. This is broken down for each year into two categories, salaries and benefits and material supplies and services. The difference in proposed fiscal year 21 revenues of 43.2 million and expenses of 45 million represents the current budget deficit of roughly 1.8 million. With the reductions approved last week, the estimated fund balance for the general fund at the end of the fiscal year has increased from what we were estimating early on, which is the same as saying that the deficit has been reduced by 1.75 million, about half what we were expecting. The structural deficit began as 3.5 million in the adopted budget, closed the gap by 1.75 million, reducing the structural deficit to, as mentioned in Slide 5, 1.8 million. This means the general fund balance, AKA healthy cities reserve, remember that the same thing, will be reduced by 1.8 million in this budget. Further expenditures and revenue changes will affect this figure. Council has placed a strong emphasis on making it a priority to replenish this fund back to 15% as surpluses allow. The fiscal year 2021 level of general fund expenditure budget, as it is at the 45 million, a 15% healthy cities reserves would be $6,752,998. So you can see, we would need to save 2.2 million with those numbers in the coming years to recover to the 15% if our general fund expenditure budgets were to remain the same, a constant 45 million, which we already know that PERS costs alone will make that zero expenditure growth impossible, so maybe 2.5 million or 3 million might be more realistic. I know you're familiar with this slide. This, I keep putting this CalPERS slide in here just as a constant reminder and to give another chance to say out loud that pensions will continue to be a significant issue, a significant concern for Uba City, and will be one of the factors we'll be monitoring closely as the latest actuaries from CalPERS will arrive late next month or beginning of August. And going back to what I had pointed out last time I showed this slide in May 26th, the red line is the actual track that we're on as of the last actuaries with a fiscal year 26 cost of about 11.49 million for the employer cost for CalPERS. The enterprise funds, water and wastewater utilities, were discussed on June 9th and no changes were made for the adoption of this budget. The revenues and expenses will continue to be monitored and evaluated by council and staff, and budget amendments will be brought forth as necessary. For the fiscal year 2021, water fund revenue budget, the fiscal year 1920 budget figures were used, projected figures were used. The slight dip between the projected and proposed amount is due to the expected decline in investment earnings. As with the general fund, we used rollover budget for expenditures for water operating funds, the only changes coming from salaries and benefits, ISF changes, charges, and cost allocation charges. The slide shows a dip in revenue, then an increase from rate increases before a slight decline this year, and next, all while expenses continue to rise steadily. The proposed budget, the proposed total revenue is forecast to decline just under 1% compared to expense increases of 7.8%. Increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain above the 1.2 required in the bond debt covenants, and the forecast is 1.67. And, oops, didn't hit it. And I highlighted the 1.2 line about right here, and the blue line is the historical debt coverage and then the projected debt coverage, so we're a little higher than the 1.2. As a review, the total revenues are supported almost entirely by operations, just under 16 million, a small decline of 0.9% as capital revenues, connection fees have dropped way off since the Great Recession, and are forecast to remain flat at about 450,000. Water operating expenses continue to rise, forecasted to increase by almost 9% over the fiscal year 1920 projections, while debt service and CIP will also increase 5.48% and 21.35% respectively. CIP appears to be a big increase, but these are relatively small amounts, so that only equates to an increase of 400,000. Bringing the forecast to 2.2 million, the debt service increase is due to the Smart Water loan from the state of California. The fiscal year 2021 wastewater fund revenue budget, the fiscal year 1920 projected figures were used for the wastewater service charges, but the other revenue categories were kept the same level as the 1920 budget. The slight dip between the projected and proposed amount is due to the expected decline in investment earnings again. As the general fund, as with the general fund and the water budget, we used a rollover budget for expenditures for wastewater operating funds, the only changes coming from, again, salaries and benefits, ISF changes, and the cost allocation charges. This slide shows increasing revenues, keeping up with expenses that also continue to increase steadily. However, as the large capital project at the water treatment plant begins to wind down, we will see both a decline in overall revenues and expenditures in the fund. The proposed total revenue is to forecast to decline 1.7% compared to expense increases of 9.5%. Like water, increasing expenses are contributing to the declining debt coverage ratio, though we are projecting the ratio to remain, again, above the 1.2 required in the bond debt covenants at 1.7, and again, highlighting the blue line as the historical and the projected and proposed, and then we have the 1.2 is down here below it. Operating revenues are less erratic than that of water because of flat rate billing, which means that conservation or lack thereof does not affect revenue in wastewater. We are forecasting a small decrease in operating revenues, 2%, to bring us to 16.8 million. Capital revenues, which are made up of connections mostly, are expected to increase slightly to 390,000 over the 1920 projections. The expenses in the wastewater fund are reflective of steadily increasing operating costs, with a 2021 increase forecast to be 14% and a big spike in CIP from the wastewater plant improvement projects, while debt service remains flat with no new debt issued since 2018. As this unprecedented budget year is worked through and the documents examines, no previous budget method has felt adequate enough, and this council remains adaptable. The council formed an ad hoc committee last week to review or further review further department budget reduction opportunities, the city council budget, the vehicle replacement plan, community contributions, and enterprise fund budgets, to look at ways we might be able to further close the structural deficit and perhaps utilize fewer reserves. Considerations that I am asking you to adopt in tonight's resolution are, well, I will be, that you'll accept me coming to bring you quarterly updates on the budget and revenues. I will be asking council to authorize a Uba City position at the animal shelter to replace a recently retired Sutter County Office Assistant III with an administrative clerk III, which was determined by our human resources team to be the most substantially similar to the former. It is Uba City's role to hire for vacancies and replace Sutter County employees with ones from Uba City as retirements and separations allow, and the total impact on the Uba City budget, being a 70% member of the JPA, is an estimated reduction of $3,200, and this would be due to salary savings. The coming election cost is not included yet in the budget document and is estimated to be 60,000, but this will depend on how many items we end up with on the ballot. So it's, I'm viewing that as more of a kind of a maximum number. Speaking to Terrell Locke, she says it could be as low as 30,000, but we just, we don't really know yet. We are typically not invoiced for the election cost by Sutter County until the spring, so the election happens in November and we don't get an invoice until March typically. We have experienced greater legal services costs in recent years, and staff recommends increase in the legal services budget by 200,000 to 450,000 for the year. This figure is based on estimates from the current year, and we know the actual 1920 history, we will know the actual 1920 history by the first budget review in September, October. So with that, I'm able to answer your questions. Or tape the questions.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment on the ad hoc committee after fellow council people ask their questions.
All right.
Are we open up to the public first, Mayor, or do you want to?
If you have a question, go ahead. If there's no specific, we don't have to.
I, thank you so much for having, I do support the implementation and monitoring and reassessment. I think that that's really important. So are we planning to have these updates like in October or in January or just October? Is there any thought about that?
Quarterly, I plan to come to you quarterly, which was always the, is always the practice of the Finance Department, so you would expect to have a review of, in September, October anyway, but we'll be paying special attention to, really focusing on what's changed revenue in the revenue picture, and then we'll be looking for further recommendations or amendments brought to us, brought forth by the ad hoc, city council ad hoc committee. And then there would be another opportunity for me to come to you in maybe the January timeframe, and then we'll get into, again, the budget season, and so we always are before you for the budget season, give you an update on where we are.
Okay, okay. So maybe it'll have more clarification with the ad hoc committee that you're going to provide, Mayor Boomgar, but, and based on the report, the staff reporting, some of the potential recommendations, and I just want to outline some of the areas that I do support, and I do support the removing of the vehicle replacement plan and using some of the healthy city reserves. I struggle with the 2.5 reduction that we decide to do. I know that it's necessary, but it's one of those things that tugs at your heart because you know it's impacting members of our city, community, and the people that provide the services. I am supportive of the police department recruitment position and remain funded. The drawdown, I continue to be supportive of that, the purchase of the 125 police motorcycle through the vehicle replacement plan, I'm supportive of that and some future recommendations, and I look forward to the ad hoc committee of what you're going to hopefully help us as these decisions come along and as we work through this. I just want to thank Spencer and Lynn, because this has been not a typical year with a budget, as it was even last year was not a typical year, but we had more of an ask for your time, your patience, your expertise, and I just want to recognize your leadership and thank you for doing what you're doing in these very challenging times. And both of you, and talking with you, Spencer, you've been completely open-minded and having conversations, navigating the changes, and helping me become familiar with areas that I wasn't and how this whole process worked out. So I just, I want to say thank you for that work, both of you, and for the rest of your teams, so thank you so much.
Good. All right, public comment?
And I'm going to step back in for a second.
Yes, we received four so far. All right, the first one I'll read is from Phil Traynor. Honorable Mayor Sean Harris and council persons. Dear Mayor Harris, the council meeting of June 9, 2020 evaluated the present conditions facing our city. Unfortunately, the public are restrained from attending such meetings due to COVID-19 virus and its consequences. Your council and the city staff acknowledge that a reduction must be made in salaries and material costs. However, it would benefit both the city and more especially the citizens if the various city unions and city executives would come together with offers as to help, they might help through this pandemic. The public, through the local and national telecasters, are aware of the problems that might be encountered due to union contracts. However, we believe all Uba City employees and their unions will raise to the, I think he means rise to the occasion, and tighten their belts to the same extent as the general public. Ms. Langley bears our total sympathy. She accepted the city manager's position, probably not realizing the job has no resolution. She answers to your board while keeping the various departments intact, for that she deserves the city's thanks. We wish, we ask the council to explain further the disposition of the wastewater and water departments' funds. Water Department PowerPoint show has salary and benefit at 3.2 million annually, materials, etc., okay. Yeah, you guys have copies of this, I'm not sure what he's asking, but what was overlooked was the revenue stream from these two departments. The public has a right to know how these accounts are reconciled. Moreover, how was excesses from these accounts dispensed with over the past five years? The water department in the past five years produced excess funds of over 35 million and sent additional contributions of 6.0 million to unstated accounts. I cannot say anything about the wastewater as our domicile is on a septic system. Lastly, the mayor suggested that an ad hoc committee be formed in, hoping to rectify the financial problems. Keep in mind, the same council formed an ad hoc committee to address unfunded liability without consequences. That ad hoc turned out to be council members only. The public was left in the dark with promises unkept similar to previous elected officials. Previous, the unfunded liability expense may be the only account that can keep the city from going totally adrift. Before passing the 2021 budget, the taxpayers should be advised of the potential outcome through the local newspapers and radio stations, as we may be living with COVID-19 for many years to come. May we have your immediate response to this letter, hoping it can be read in the five minutes allocated to the public's input? This is Phil Traynor of Uba City.
Did you, we talked about this before, Lisa, Diane and I, we have a little bit to elaborate on for Phil on this?
Yes, Spencer is going to provide some responses to Mr. Traynor's questions.
Thanks.
Sure. So my responses are focused more on the water and wastewater portion. So just looking through Phil's number, or Mr. Traynor's numbers and the amounts, I came up with, to his first point, the, he says five years of excess funds. I added up five years of net operating revenues and came up with 32,000, that's about as close as I could get to his number, not knowing exactly which figures he was using, and...
That's 32 million.
32, sorry, 32 million. And I think that one thing missing from that statement is that 32 million also has to cover debt service, that net operating revenue, and capital improvement projects, which in the same years totaled about 26.2 million. So the balance, I did mention the 1.2 debt coverage ratio, we are required to keep some cash on hand, and I think that's where you're going to see the balance of those dollars of roughly 6 million or so. To his second point, talking about the debt, or talking about the 6 million transferred to unstated accounts, I believe he's referring to the cost allocation plan transfers, and these transfers are when the general fund charges the utility funds for services, so human resources charges, bills the enterprise fund for their time spent supporting the enterprise fund. Finance does the same, as we spend time supporting the enterprise fund, and this is a very common practice, and Uba City's been doing it for many years. So I believe, I took the same years and came up with 5.9 million, so I believe that's the 6 million he's speaking of. If he's implying in his letter that there are revenues or profits that should be, you know, spread around, I will say that each fund and fund accounting is a closed loop, and we can't just share profits from the enterprise fund to help cover any deficiencies of the general fund. So I think that's a very important point to make. We're talking about net revenues and cash on hand in the enterprise funds, that the funds can't cross, the funds, the monies can't cross, those are separate checkbooks accounted for separately, so that was the best I could do on that. Hope that helps.
I think you did well, and unfortunately, Phil is not here, so if you, Phil, if you're listening, if you have any follow-up questions, I am confident that that'd be no problem, you can approach staff at any time. Spencer is pointing at himself. So we have, I think you said, three more?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, this, yeah, this next one's divest from Uba City Police Department, presentation made by Lisa Rojas-Palado and other members from the grassroots organization of Equity for Uba City. Defund police equals divest from police funds to invest in community-based public safety programs. Invest in mental health and wellness, housing, education, community centers, and healthcare. Divest in the militarization of police, in the use of police for mental health crisis, in the use of police for homelessness, in the cooperation with federal immigration enforcement agents and police officers in school. Invest in social workers and healthcare workers and facilities to address mental health crisis and homelessness, and invest in school psychologists, not school policemen. Based on my conversation with the Uba City Police Chief, Rob Landon, the Uba City Police Department adheres to California's high standard for police training. By this logic, the Uba City Police Department and San Francisco Police Department adhere to the same standards. According to Los Angeles Times, San Francisco police officers will be replaced with trained unarmed professionals to respond to calls for help on non-criminal matters involving mental health, the homeless, school discipline, and neighbor disputes. Therefore, Uba City should also move towards less policing and more community-led programs. Help would be more specifically trained to help the community. Uba City highly needs investment in their communities. Data reflects Uba City as a diverse community, or diverse city with diverse communities. Focus your attention on the local column. Data reflects a lack of well-paying jobs and careers for Uba City inhabitants. Please focus your attention on the local column. In 2018, white people in Sutter County made up 50% of the households that depended on welfare food stamps, while African black people made up only 4%. welfare food stamps, while African black people made up only 4%. Data reflects a lack of support for Yuba City inhabitants' education. Again, please focus your attention on the local column. The following may be helpful for students to be successful. Wide college preparation programs, community centers with student tutoring services and mentoring services, educational and professional development workshops, summer internships in the community, doctor shadowing engineering business, and community partnerships with the schools. Yuba City has a mental health crisis related to substance abuse. Substance abuse-related hospitalizations in Marysville, California, located in Yuba County in the northern Central Valley region at 324.7 per 100,000 population were more than double the rates of 143.8 per 100,000 population in 2011. Yuba City had much higher rates, as did Yuba County overall, and the city of Olivehurst also had high incidence of hospitalizations for substance abuse-related issues as well. Hospitalizations for mental health concerns were also higher in all three cities than the state of California in general. Marysville, 256 per 100,000; Yuba City, 238.5 per 100,000; and Olivehurst rates were 173.2 And this shows, this is where Yuba City could be tomorrow with action today.
How many more slides do you have?
Four.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yuba City should build community centers for the following communities: black people, LGBTQT and people, Native American people, Asian people, Latin, I think she means Latino people, youth, women, undocumented people, people with mental illnesses, and homeless Urban planning ethics always ask the neighborhood if they are okay with building a community center in their backyard. Idea: Build a five-story building where the old Kmart used to be and dedicate each floor for additional community. Immediate actions the council can take: Host a public hearing where you hear the community's input on divesting and investing police funds. Create a city council committee for equality, diversity, and inclusion with members from the community. Motion to table Agenda Item 9, adoption of the city of Yuba City's fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets and fiscal year 2021 appropriations limit until a proper public hearing is hosted. Acknowledgements of the resources that helped me in Yuba City, Sutter County. I did not pull myself up from my own bootstraps. I received the help of countless people. I recognize the spaces in which I took were limited. Thus, I want to see expansive programs that reach the communities that most need it. To build equality is what the city needs. And an update she sent is the petition named "Call to Action: Defund Yuba City Police Department" has 412 signatures. Last time she checked at 5:58 PM today. That is 412 voters and taxpayers. And then we have two more that have come in. All right. Thomas Burns of Yuba City. Good job, Spencer. He also said, "Cut costs. At this rate, the city will be broke in the future. The budget needs big cuts, and it looks like that's not happening. Can the public be part of the ad hoc committee? Any plans to ease building permits?" That has been a big sore point for local build. And then there's one more. Oh, where did it go? All right. I took a picture of it, so let me read it real quick. Not sure where that went on our thing. Sorry. Okay. Um, oh, actually, I'm sorry. The last one that I read, "At this rate, the city will be broke," that was from Suksidu. Thomas Burns was just to cut costs. So Suksidu was the one that said, "At this rate, the city will be broke in the future. The budget needs big cuts, and it looks like that's not happening. Can the public be part of the ad hoc committee? And if there's any plans to ease building permits?" And that has been a big sore point for local build.
So that entire last comment was from?
From Suksidu.
Suksidu.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. All right. And just confirming, no others?
Not at this point. Well, actually, one more from Thomas Burns, and he was agreeing with Phil Trainer.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the commentary from the council members, right here. Go ahead.
Excuse me. Got kind of a coffee voice, so pardon me if I cough in the middle. Okay, I wanted to brief the council on the ad hoc committee that you authorized, just to give you a heads up on on the planned activities. Or priority one is a review of each department, which would include at the table Spencer and his team, anyone he wants from his team, plus the department head and myself and Councilman Shaw. I think that with that group, we can take a look at the budget, partner, and I emphasize the word partner, with the department heads in an effort to see where there might be some additional funds available to to deal with some of the deficit. The only department that I do not see us meeting with is Mr. Moody's department, based upon our actions at the previous meeting of not wanting to cut any of that. The it's important that we, as a city council, lead by example, so that will be an emphasis of the ad hoc committee. But I think it's most important to understand that whatever the ad hoc committee comes up with in partnership with the department heads and with specifically with finance would be brought back to the council for review and comment and potential approval. So I don't want anyone to think that this ad hoc committee is working out there on their own. It will come back here, and and we will be able to consider whatever's being proposed and take a look at it. The second priority, and it does not need as immediate an attention, even though I think it's a sore spot, for me, anyway, and others, it sounds like, is the vehicle replacement fund. So the vehicle replacement fund will take a second, second billing to the the ad hoc committee's work in regards to, you know, the current budget. I think everyone agrees that that particular fund mechanism is in need of review and potential revatment. I know that staff has already begun to look at that, which I greatly appreciate, finding out what others are doing. It's always is always worthwhile. There was a comment, typically we don't respond to comments, but I do want to make sure, because it is an ongoing thing, is that the council, through another ad hoc committee, is currently looking at development impact fees in an effort to try to to address the need for development, as development obviously can result in increased revenues, which could also help offset. So there was a comment about building permits. Trust me, we are very engaged, and that is a committee that is made up not only of city staff, electeds, and the private sector as well. And I would also say that, based on what Mr. Morrison presented, our budget did take big cuts. And each one of the departments, with the exception of, again, Mr. Moody's department, did take a big, did take big cuts. And, you know, I think our efforts in trying to address this, though they may not be agreeable to all, certainly are an effort in the right direction. And I would echo the comments made by Councilwoman Espendola for the very difficult work that the finance team has undertaken in this unprecedented time of budget reductions, but also to our executive team and for their efforts. And I'm assuming, based upon comments, that they also dove down into their organization. So those that were participative in that process, which is the employees as well, they we hold them in high regard. And as a council, I think I can speak on behalf of us. If I can't, then, okay. But, you know, we're cognizant of taking care of our Yuba City family. We're cognizant of taking care of our Yuba City citizens that elected us to represent them. And I feel comfortable and confident moving forward based upon the review process that, you know, we'll be able to adjust on the fly. And with that, I'd be happy to address any questions on the council, on the ad hoc committee or the vehicle replacement fund, and our work therefor.
I know we're looking forward to some, you guys are going to do a lot of hard work, anticipate it, I'm sure. And so I thank you all and all of you in advance for that. And appreciate the summary of what's ahead. Thank you very much. Anybody have anything else?
No, it sounds really good. Thank you for giving that outline and support the work. Thanks.
All right, everything. All right. So we have, if there's no other public comment or comment from the DIAS, we have some action to consider. A, B, and C.
The mayor?
Yep.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2021, 2020, 2021 operational budget. Consider an increase to the city clerk division budget for an estimated election cost of $60,000, an increase of $200,000 for legal services per staff recommendations. As part of this budget or an amendment at a later date, the proposed all funds budget summary for fiscal year 2020, 2021 is attached to our reports. Likewise, adopt Resolution B and C.
Second.
All right. First and second. All those in favor, shoot in five by saying aye, please.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Spencer, and your team.
All right.